Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Mesa City Council's study session for September the 14th. I see by the Zoom screen that all of our council is present. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda for tonight's council meeting. So, council, please refer to that document. Council, are there any, before we begin, any questions you have? Any additional information you'd like on anything that's on our agenda for tonight? I'm not seeing, I know we just went over it on a study session on Thursday. Currently, yes, Councilmember Duff.
One thing I wanted to note on the minutes is, the minutes are correct, but I made a misstatement on the, I need to look at which study session it was. It was about, yeah, on the August 24th council minutes. The minutes are correct, like I said. I made a misstatement on the Mesa Chiefs Higher Education meeting with Mesa Council and College Director Amy Trethewey, matching CARES dollars allocated for the PROMIS program. They were not CARES dollars, they were human service dollars. So, I just wanted to note a correction to my error in making that statement. I don't know if that belongs on the minutes, but I just wanted to report that as not being correct.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, that makes sense. Now, I don't know that the minutes for that meeting are part of our, are they part of our council agenda for tonight? Approving those minutes?
If they're the-
Is that an agenda item?
If they're the August 24th council meeting minutes, then yes, they are probably on the agenda for approval tonight.
Okay, great. So, City Clerk Mickelson, can we make that correction to those minutes?
We can add a clarification to those minutes. That's not a problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council, any other information you'd like regarding, yes, Jeremy?
I'd just like to request 4J be taken off consent.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Agenda Item 4J will be removed from the consent agenda. Clerk Mickelson, I know we had a request, a blue card that was submitted on Agenda Item 3D, but my, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that that was only in the event that item came off the agenda, and that the person wanted to speak to it, is that correct?
That's correct. Only if it came off the agenda, or if there were questions from council.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll see how that goes, assuming that it remains on the consent agenda, we'll just not plan on hearing from that speaker. Okay, council, any other questions or information you'd like about tonight's meeting? Okay, here, we do have a couple of awards proclamations that we'll be issuing tonight that I'm excited to talk about, and I know some city staff and some council members are going to join me in these proclamations, so I will take care of that at the beginning of the meeting tonight. If there are no additional questions regarding tonight's agenda, the next item on our agenda for this meeting is Item 2, that's to hear a presentation and provide direction on an update of the Mesa CARES Residential Utility Assistance Program, including a proposed increase in funding to the program. Mr. Brady, I believe we're going to hear from Ed Quendons on this, is that correct?
Mr. Quedens is here to make the presentation, mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Ed Quedens, Business Services Department Director. The presentation tonight will go over the current program overview, giving you a brief update on it. We'll talk about the customer response to the program so far. We'll talk about a resumption of utility disconnects, as well as the proposed program updates that we're asking to make. So, if you recall, our current program, customers apply for assistance through MesaCAN. They must have a Mesa address. We are using Mesa CARES dollars, so those customers that we serve with our utilities in Maricopa County and Penal County are not eligible for the program. Both of those counties have assistance programs that those customers can go to. They must have a COVID-19 financial impact, and usually that is a job loss, or reduction of hours, or something along those lines. And there are the income qualifications. We are using federal standards coming to us through DES, and we're using the 200% poverty level right now, and we are proposing that we're going to increase that to a 225% poverty level. One of the things that happened to us during the federal dollars towards unemployment was our standards were right on the border and excluded some people that we didn't intend to exclude. So, by moving to the 225%, as well as the expiration of the $300 additional unemployment insurance benefit, we will be within the standards for someone who is on unemployment, which is what we wanted to address. There is only a 30-day look back on the income for the application as well, so it doesn't matter what you made in January, pre-COVID, it doesn't matter what you made in July, it is what you're making right now within the last 30 days. So, if someone becomes unemployed, this is a tool that's available to them. Also, in our current program, when we established it, we set it up so that we use the Department of Economic Security point system in the award evaluation. So, most of those awards, well, those awards fell between $75 and $800. Most of the awards come back at $480 or $640, just by the nature of the point system. And MesaCAN has, under those rules, the ability to award a $1,000 supplemental amount. This is when they evaluate that customer's need, and they see a significant need that isn't being addressed through the regular award amount, they can add that. And then the award, whatever that amount is, is split between Mesa, SRP, and Southwest Gas, depending on where the customer needs the assistance. And if you recall, we had considerable conversation about this for the implementation. MesaCAN sends the award information to the city for Mesa Utilities, and they send a payment to SRP and Southwest Gas. We have given MesaCAN an advance to pay Southwest Gas and SRP, so no money goes to the customer. It's all done either by the city or between MesaCAN and the utility. So, one of the things that we'd like to enhance, considering the need out there in the community, I think when we established the program, we really didn't know that this was going to go on so long, and that we were going to get into the summer months where there are considerable utility bills, particularly for the electric. So, what we would like to do is remove the award criteria from DES, that $75 to $800, and we'd like to be able to pay off the May through October outstanding balance for the utilities. This is really, you know, I think this is really what the dollars were intended for, and I think we'd be doing a great deal of assistance for our community and those who are in hardship right now. So, our awards so far, you know, these are a little bit disappointing. We have talked to MesaCAN, we have talked to SRP, and we all find the same thing. We find this in our normal utility assistance program. People are slow to respond, to apply for assistance. It's just, they need that deadline of something happening, in this case, upcoming, the delinquent turnoffs resuming before they apply. But also, one of the things that we're struggling with this time too, I think, is many of the people who need assistance have never had to ask for assistance before, so they may be reluctant to actually pick up the phone or complete that application to request it. So, these are the current stats as of the weekend. I will tell you, I got a notice this afternoon that we have 48 new awards that we are in the process of posting. So, I think as our message gets out that we are resuming turnoffs on October 1st, that gets closer, I think we will start to see these numbers pick up considerably. Our delinquent accounts receivable, we have a considerable amount past due. These are Mesa customers, I'm sorry, Mesa residents in the chart. Our Maricopa County and Penal County customers, there's about another quarter of a million dollars past due, and this is as of the weekend. I don't usually worry a lot about the 1 to 30 days late. Some of those will turn into the 31 to 60, but a large number of those are that, you know, the check is in the mail, it is being processed by the third party yet, someone misplaces their bill, and when they get the next bill that has the big red header at the top that says "delinquent, pay immediately," they take care of that. So, a good portion of those do not end up moving to the 31 and older categories.
Excuse me, Ed. I think Mr. Thompson has it for you.
Ed, how many of those delinquent accounts on the residential side, are those being paid? Are a lot of those, are a lot of those cash-paying or check-paying customers, predominantly cash-paying customers, right? Are they able to use the new kiosks that we installed at the city? I think we have three now.
Yes, they are able-
So, are they utilizing those kiosks, or these delinquent amounts, are those predominantly the cash-paying?
I'm not able to see who specifically is delinquent. They're out on our, our performance portal, our data portal webpage, there is a chart that breaks it down by zip code, who is actually getting the awards, but I don't have in front of me information on who these folks are or where they are. We do see continued increase in the number of transactions that are coming in through the kiosk. It is really becoming a well-used tool, considering the environment we're in. And of these 8,500 past due accounts, right now, we are holding about 3,135 turnoff orders, so, and then another 498 for non-Mesa customers. So, if you recall, we suspended the delinquent account turnoffs on March 9th in response to the COVID. We do plan to resume those turnoffs on October 1st. We are in alignment with SRP. Others that we've queried are going to resume the turnoffs somewhere between October 1st and the 1st of the new year. When we resume our turnoffs, we are going to go back to the same thresholds we established last fall, which is $145 or more past due, and we will suspend those turnoffs, except for the gas. We will suspend those turnoffs when the National Weather Service issues their excessive heat warnings, and this has been past practice for a good number of years. Our outreach so far has been generally postcards and robocalls. So, in June, July, and August, we did incremental mailings and robocalls to over 4,100 accounts. By incremental, I mean, these are new people that came into that category, into that group. On August 26th, we hit all delinquent accounts that were pending disconnect, so that was another 2937 Mesa residents, and that notice did include that we were intending to resume disconnects on October 1st. Again, trying to create that impetus for people to actually take action and either pay, call us for a payment arrangement, whatever's needed, or to actually apply for assistance. Ahead, starting later this week, utilities, field crews are actually going to go out and place door hangers on each of the residents that have a disconnect order pending, and they will knock on the door, and if someone is home, they will actually have personal contact with those folks. They will be notified that the disconnects resume on October 1st. In all likelihood, this is going to take us between, I'm guessing, four to eight weeks, depending on how people respond. So, we will start robocalls to those who still have a disconnect scheduled out into the future. Again, their last chance to pay or to get assistance before we show up to turn them One of the things that I'd like to establish is an expedited safety net program, so we need to prevent as many of the disconnects as possible. This is going to be a pretty big burden on our field crews and our credit staff, our customer service staff, so if we can give our credit staff the ability to verify eligibility and pay off the Mesa account balance, rather than trying to coordinate our efforts with MesaCAN and the MesaCAN application process. I think what we can do is, when that customer calls in the panic that they are about to be turned off, or that the crew was just there, rather than waiting for the application process, the customer service and credit staff can ask a few questions, get a certification form, and actually apply that payment to the Mesa account, so that the customer can be either prevented from disconnect, or can be reconnected in a very timely manner. And because we don't have the insight into the SRP and Southwest Gas databases of balances, what we're going to request is that the customer go to MesaCAN if they still need assistance with those two utility bills. So, again, our proposal is to update the program, update our income qualifications. We want to enhance the amount of assistance available under the program, so as to pay off the March through October Mesa, SRP, and Southwest Gas open balances, and we want to create the expedited safety net program for disconnects. One of the things that I did not mention was that I reached out to SRP. SRP does, as you can imagine, in the high electric months, SRP has a significant number of Mesa customers that are delinquent and have a pretty substantial balance, and as well, they are going to be resuming their disconnects on October 1st, too. So, our enhancements to our program, as well as acknowledging that we are paying off SRP bills as well, we are recommending that we increase the budget for the program from $1 million to $8 million. The money is not going to go to waste if it's not used. I'm sure Mr. Brady can find another place for it, but if we need it, it would be nice to know that we have it available. When we implemented the program, it was going to be on a first-come, first-served basis, and I think at this point, if we only put $1 million out there, we would be doing a disservice to the community. So, I think an $8 million budget should get us a long way to helping these folks that are out there in the community that need help. And if you have any questions or discussion, I'm open to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ed. I'm sure we do have some questions here. Council, who'd like to go first? Councilmember Duff?
Yes, thank you. I have quite a few questions. So, does one apply to MesaCAN, or is this MesaCAN reaching out to those delinquent customers? How is that being approached, as far as applying for, and is it a phone call or application online?
So, MesaCAN, well, I'm sorry. We have reached out to each of the customers that are in disconnect status so far, at least once this week, no, I'm sorry, at least twice this week. The door hangers will be our third contact. We have a landing page on the Mesa CARES website that gives options on how to apply. It is done through MesaCAN, but you can do a phone call to get an application mailed to you. You can walk into the lobby at MesaCAN, and the applications are available there. The application is available through a link on our website, and you can apply online. So, there's four different options to get the application.
Okay, so, it's much broader than just someone calling MesaCAN, which I know there's been some problems in the past as far as finding that window for someone to call into MesaCAN to get assistance.
That is correct.
Okay, great. And I assume only delinquent customers can apply for assistance, even though they would qualify in the, at the poverty level?
That is correct, especially as we move forward, because we're going to be paying off the utility balances. If a customer is low-income and they have other needs, there are other programs that might be available to award more on the point system like we are proposing, we abandoned for this program. We have a regular Mesa Utility Assistance Program. They could apply through that, they could apply through MesaCAN for other sources of funding.
And what is the income threshold for the program? You said at 200 or 225% of the poverty line?
Yes, at 225%, we're going to be at $2,392 for an individual, a household of one, and for a household of four, it would be $4,912.
Is that a month?
Per month.
So, $36,000, and what was the last one?
Forty-nine, almost $5,000 per month.
And that, but that, Councilmember, just quickly, remember, that is only based on a 30-day look back. Does that make sense? So, we won't, it doesn't get, if you had a job, let's say you had a job all the way through April or May, but then you lost it in June or July, or even, yeah, June, you could have a job all the way through July, but we take a snapshot of the last 30 days. So, if you had reduced hours or lost your job, we, the calculation is based on the prior 30, am I saying-
Correct.
-prior 30 days. So, it doesn't, it's not an annual review, it's just on the 30 days. So, that's how we're able to identify someone who's been impacted recently.
And you don't necessarily have to be unemployed, you can be employed and still at the poverty line.
Sure, absolutely, yep, correct.
Okay, and so, what was the upper threshold of that per month?
Well, it was giving you a family of four.
Oh, okay.
Forty-nine hundred something.
Forty-nine, 12.
Okay, for a family of four? And that would be not for wage earners, it would be children and a mother and father or something?
That's correct, it's household size.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. Ed, remind me what month does this go back to, to cover these utility bills?
The CARES funding goes back to March 1st, and it has to be expended-
Or 1st?
Yes, and it has to be expended by December 30th.
But the program only goes through, how long? I thought you said October in here.
So, the utility assistance, we are, we're trying to get everybody current by doing the, starting the disconnects in October. Like I said, it may take us four to eight weeks to get through all of those, so we may be expending funds through the program into November, just because, you know, we're trying to get those collection offs, or the turnoffs done, you know? And one of the conversations we've had, too, is, none of us really knows what the future of COVID is. There are conversations about changes to federal programs, so, you know, we're going to wait and see, you know, where the programs go, where the federal dollars go, but right now, just by the nature of the turnoffs, we anticipate we'll be pretty much done with this program by the middle to end of November.
Okay, one other question. If I was an applicant, what do I need to verify my wages or salary to apply for this program?
So, I think we've got MesaCAN on the line, too, so if I mess this up, they can, they can help supplement it.
Is Ava on the line?
Ava, are you on the line?
Good afternoon, yes, I am.
Perhaps you want to take this answer.
What was the question, I'm sorry?
How do, Council Vice Mayor, was it about validating income?
So, we validate income by 30 days back, whether it's a PESTA, your unemployment benefits, any cuts in hours, a zero income statement, I lost my job three months ago, here is my pink slip or my furlough, I am self-certifying that I have zero income, anything along those lines.
Very good. That's just for my own knowledge, and when I talk to any constituent or anybody in the community, I can have that. So, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Council, other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Luna and then Mr. Aradia.
Thank you, Ed, and thank you, Ava. I know Ava works really hard over at MesaCAN. I'm really happy that they're here in our community. They are a great safety net, especially for those individuals that need this assistance. So, my question, Ed, is, this is pretty ambitious, trying to get all this information out to our community. Are you confident that you have enough staff that can take care of the potential people that haven't responded, and if you're gym flex, will you be able to accommodate them?
Councilmember Luna, this is Mike Hughes. Yes, we're confident. Of course, we're worried about the potential onslaught of what could be, could be there, but I know we've hired additional staff, and we will pull in other additional staff, and we have to do everything possible, because it's very commendable what the city is doing in terms of paying and helping the people in the community, and no one wins if those services are turned off. So, we are doing everything we can to make sure that we can respond in a timely manner. We just have to gauge how many people will be the onslaught at once, because as Ed pointed out, people are responding slowly as of today, in terms of comparing the number that have applied versus the number that could potentially have their services turned off. So, we have to respond, we have to make sure this can be, you know, taken care of, and we are hiring the necessary people, but we are, we are concerned, to some extent, about how many will be responding, because they're waiting up until the last minute, but we do feel confident we can take care of it.
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, also, we kind of, when we put in here this comment about our procedures for a safety net for the city, we control the timing of when we will do turnoffs on our accounts, and so we have every intention, and Ed has done a very good job of coordinating with the customer service, as well as our Water Services Department. So, the idea is, we will, we're going to try to manage the idea, we're not going to just turn on October 1st, October 2nd, go and turn off every account that's eligibility turned off on that day. We are going to be more strategic, again, and we're going to go out and only turn off, you know, a subset of that, so that we can try to manage that, and the difference will be, too, when we get to this kind of, someone's power's been turned off, or their water's been shut off, we are now in a health, safety crisis for that individual. We will, we're setting up our own staff who handles a lot of these customer service calls, to be able to manage that on an expedited basis with city staff. So, we're, we're ramping up for this, that's a different program than what we have Mike and his folks doing, which we hope to get more people to now, is to go in now, before the shut-off happens, and work through Mike's staff, and we're trying to send messages out there that they need to do that sooner than later, but once the water or power is shut off in the Mesa Utilities, we will be handling that in-house, but again, we're going to be judicious and strategic about how many accounts we're turning off during a particular period of time, and making sure we can handle those responses for getting turned off. So, we're going to try, we can manage that on our side. Now, there is a concern that on the SRP side, that could happen in much greater bulk, and so there may be some pressure there, but at least on the city side, we're going to be, we're going to spread out those turnoffs, so that we can, we don't create a crisis on our end to provide for that assistance. And then we have an expedited process for when someone's been turned off, that our customer service reps can handle that call without having to go back to MesaCAN necessarily, but we're going to train them so they can just handle it immediately when they get the call.
And councilmembers, we have no illusion, we are going to, this is going to be very challenging. We are going to have the notifications of turnoffs, so we are going to have people that are going to start making those applications on October 1st in a panic, thinking they're going to be turned off that day. But we also, you know, our field crews are going to be struggling, because at the same time, they're doing a group of turnoffs, which, again, we can control the number that we put out into the field each day, but they're going to be doing their regular business as well, move-ins, move-outs, service calls of, you know, high bill usage, that kind of stuff. MesaCAN is going to get swamped. My customer service and credit staff are going to be- Mesa Can is going to get swamped, my customer service and credit staff are going to be swamped. This is going to be very challenging for these four to eight weeks. But we're going to do everything we can to make it work, and we'll do everything we can to work with the customer to get them taken care of.
Great, thank you. I know it's a very ambitious plan. Wish you the best of luck, both Mr. Hughes and Eva over at Mesa Can, and New Leaf, as well as our city staff. So best of luck, thank you for serving our community, appreciate it.
Mr. Reddya.
Yeah, no, thank you. Just wanted to just reiterate the importance of this program and the importance of ensuring that, you know, folks like the elderly or folks that don't have internet connection or that struggle in maybe sending documentation online or via email, or there's some sensitivity on how they can, you know, show the documentation proof, which, you know, it's important to have as far as the eligibility for these, these programs. But I just wanted to make sure the process is, is there to also allow for, for some of our residents that might not have the accessibility to send something via email as easy as possible, or, or in other forms. So wondering what's the process for, for those individuals that might just take a little bit longer to, to show the proof they need to, to qualify for this program?
So, I'm sorry, go ahead, Eva.
Counselmember Ed, yeah, we're very cognizant that members of the community are most vulnerable, are disabled, are homebound. So we do also take care of those individuals by mailing in the packages. We include the self-stamped envelope for them to return the entire package, especially for those who cannot come into our site. Not everybody's techy savvy, we're very cognizant of that. So we do take that very seriously, and we maintain the integrity of trying to serve everybody equitably, knowing very well that some of those members cannot come to us. So we take care of it by mailing those out to them.
And Mesa Can has received some guidance over the last months from DES, that there are certain substitute documents that they can take if someone forgets certain documents. So some of that, and we have adopted those changes as well. We've given Mesa Can authorization to go along with those guidelines. So even at the state level, coming down to the community action networks, they have acknowledged that that can cause some problems in the process.
So Ed, just a follow-up question to that. Ed, so we would, we would do similar things to, to take in those types of documents, or for the city on their accounts?
Yes.
How, how would we facilitate that?
So when we move to the Safety Net Program, when we're actually qualifying and applying payment, what we're actually looking at, we haven't finalized that yet, because there's a lot of moving pieces that we're trying to catch up. But what we're looking at is a certification form that the customer certifies that they are eligible for the different criteria. We really don't want to have a bunch of personal identifica, personal identifying information laying around, so we're probably going to rely on the certification in the case of the Safety Net Program, rather than the documents. But again, that's the Safety Net Program with Mesa Can, they have a little bit more time, and they can collect the documents or the substitute documents as is outlined in the program. The other thing, too, is if we get in a situation where a customer is scheduled for turnoff or is turned off, and they tell us that they have an application pending with Mesa Can, we will mark that on the account, we will restore the service or, or hold the turnoff until we get word from Mesa Can, whether or not they have qualified or not. And again, you know, we'll handle those types of issues on a, on a one-on-one basis to make sure that the customer is taken care of as best we can.
Councilman Haredya, you bring us some great points, and really, what we need right now desperately is for these accounts to contact us and start having a conversation about what we can, how we can help them, and, and then what they're going to need to get help. Right now, that biggest challenge, despite all our outreach and actually putting in their own bills, the fact that they're behind, we're just not getting enough engagement. And so what we're hoping at a minimum is we can at least get an engagement started, then we'll be very flexible about the turnoff, right? If we can just start having a conversation and hopefully processing the application so they can receive funding. That's really what we're trying to achieve here, is just to get an individual, an account that is in arrears or is subject to being shut off, to start engaging with us and working towards a solution. That's our, that's our objective here.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Ed, do we know of the 8,500 past due accounts, do we know how many of those are still active accounts? Are all 8,500 still actual active accounts?
Yes, those are active accounts.
Okay. And then Eva, you can probably better answer this. If someone comes in for assistance, are we providing, we, I say Mesa Can, because I'm on the board, but are we providing the wraparound services to help those individuals altogether? Because they, a lot of times, there's more than, there's more to it than just, I can't pay my utility bill. So are we providing those services and helping them become sustainable and stable?
Counselmember Thompson, thank you for the question. Absolutely, we are. So you are correct, families are in fact struggling not just to pay their utility bills. They have food insecurities, some of them are still looking for jobs, so we've opened that up. We still have financial coaching, we have asset building, we are providing those wraparound services that will move them forward.
All right, thank you. Counsel, other, other questions on this topic? The agenda does call for us to provide direction on, on counsel, on staff's request that we offer additional funding on this item. I think, correct, Mr. Brady, you're suggesting we go from $1 million to $8 million, is that correct? Did I get that right?
That is correct, Mayor. I mean, again, it's kind of a guess, but talking, seeing what Ed has produced today as far as what's in arrear and conversations with SRP, which we think will be more or, more than probably what is owed to the City of Mesa, we felt like we needed to increase that to $8 million to get us through the end of the year.
Okay. We could do this by way of motion, or I think we could...
We're just looking for direction, Mayor, unless someone's opposed to this, otherwise, I see the nodding.
Anyone have concerns on that? Seeing thumbs up on the, on the Zoom screens. Let me just say amen to the, what the staff and then council have said on this agenda item. I am, I'm concerned, this is a big problem. We've got 8,500 delinquencies right now. Out of that, you know, 3,000 to 5,000 of those are folks that are, you know, 60 days or more delinquents, which to me indicates, you know, some serious financial struggles in those homes. For whatever reason, people, I think, to this point, haven't got the message that there is help available to help, you know, extricate them from that problem. So, so I think it's incumbent on everyone participating in this meeting, you know, to do all we can to try to get this word out, because preventing disconnects has got to be a priority. You know, that's going to be a very disruptive thing to those families, it's going to be very time-consuming and problematic for, for our staff, you know, to, to handle, you know, the thousands of disconnects that are, that are looming out there right now. So I just encourage all of us to, to get the media to somehow pay attention to this, that, you know, the City of Mesa has money to come to the rescue on this problem. I think we probably need to work with our faith community, with the nonprofits, you know, with the, with the people that traditionally are the ones who get telephone calls when, when families are in distress, and help them know that we can be of assistance. And then I, I understand what staff is saying about, we're going to need to stagger these turnoffs, and I like the idea that once somebody has been turned off, we don't necessarily need to refer them to an agency. We can, we can initiate the funding directly through the City of Mesa at that point. Did I understand that correctly, Mr. Brady?
Yeah, the idea is to try to get, at that point, we need to deal with the issue at hand in a health, safety crisis, if you would. And then obviously, we'd probably let them know about Mesa Can, because there's probably other services that they can assist with. Both New Leaf and Save the Family also may, can help them with, or even our own folks with rental assistance also. So there's a variety of other assistance that they may be in need of. But yeah, that, so that right immediately is, once we've turned someone off, we are now in a health, safety crisis for that individual, and we need to figure out, we're trying to come up with a plan that we can expedite almost immediately the assistance, or at least prevent, we can get the water or the power turned back on until we can work out the, you know, crediting the accounts that they have.
Okay. Yes, Counselmember Duff.
Yes, thank you. I think it's a tremendous program. I just wanted to suggest, perhaps at the COVID testing and flu shot program that we have going on at the elementary schools from mid-September, could we, could Mesa Can have a table, or at minimum, there be flyers available to hand out to those who are attending as a way to get the word out?
Thank, yep. Nope, thank you, Counselmember Duff. We're actually having a bag that's going to include that, this information, and mask, and sanitizer, and I think Lindsay mentioned some cleaning supplies also. So yes, we intend to, because as you may guess, the same, those same ZIP codes are the areas where we're seeing the highest number of accounts that are falling behind. So we're going to use that as an opportunity to share the information about what's available for assistance and that, on those Saturdays also.
Great, perfect, thank you.
First, I assume there'll be some electronic flyers as well that we can share through the regular media and social media and...
Yeah, I know there's a press release ready to go out, and we can work on the social media side using that content, Mayor. So yeah, we'll be glad to get it out any way we can. I think as we get individuals to those events with the social media, that we intend to also let them know about this opportunity also.
Okay, great, well, thank you. I'm proud that we can be part of the solution, we just got to help people understand that we're, try to get to them before it becomes a crisis. Counsel, if there's nothing else, we'll proceed to the next agenda item that we have, that's item three, which is the current event summary and reports on meetings and conferences. I know we've all been pretty busy, let's start with Mr. Thompson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I know a couple of us attended Detective John Fitzgerald's retirement last Thursday, 31-year officer, amazing individual, I think Chief Cost mentioned several times that he's a legend. And, and I would agree, he's done, he's done so many marvelous things for our community and, and as a police officer as well, so he's going to be sorely messed by, by a lot, a lot of individuals. And also today, you and I had the honor of, of joining Chief Camilli to break ground on the new station out at, fire station out at Eastmark. That was a collaboration between Brookfield and the City of Mesa, and big thanks to Manager Brady for, for his, all the work that he did back in the day of acquiring the land and so forth, and working with, with at the time, DMB. But, and then the citizens, obviously, for passing the Public Safety Bond last year. And so we're finally seeing the fruits of that labor pay off, and we're going to have a brand-new fire station out at Eastmark at Point 22 and Ray, and Ellsworth Road, probably around this time next year.
Thank you. Yes, that's a great, great day for Southwest Mesa, or I'm sorry, Southeast Mesa. We're going to see lower response times, and I think, again, thanks to the whole city for voting for that bond. Counselmember Duff.
Yes, I wanted to thank everybody and for our community conversation we had last Thursday at 4:00 PM, which is a virtual conversation we had about whatever the constituents wanted to talk about. We had some discussions about how to get involved in community projects, downtown development, and our COVID testing and flu shots, and some other things. The next community conversation that I'll be hosting with Vice Mayor Freeman will be on September 24th, and we'll be discussing the transportation bond on these, this upcoming election, which is question one. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, other comments under this item? Okay, seeing none. The next item on our agenda is schedule of future meetings. Mr. Brady, when are we meeting next?
Mayor, we'll see you on Thursday, this Thursday, September 17th. We have some additional program enhancements that we want to share with you on Mesa Cares to present to you on that day also. Thank you.
Great. I mean, just saying, I'm proud of the way our city is being responsible with the use of these virus relief funds, and I think we are going to see, continue to see some evolution here in the next few weeks and months as we send this money where it's most needed. So I appreciate staff coming back to us with tweaks and suggestions on how this money ought to be best, best spent. So we'll look forward to that meeting on Thursday. Counsel, if there's nothing else, let's entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Who would like to make that motion? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Please unmute your microphones. All in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. We will now wait for the tape to run to welcome us to our next meeting.